And I appreciate you all being here. We will have the, well, let me read the first part here. Bossier City Council Regular Meeting today. Normally it's on Tuesdays, but we had the 4th of July holiday, so it's today. July 6, 2017 at 3:00 PM. Have the call to order invocation by Mr. Scott Erwin and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Timothy Lorcan. Please stand.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. Lord, as we celebrate our nation's birth this week, we just want to pause, Lord, and acknowledge the blessings. Lord, we pray for everyone to have safety as this storm gathers outside. Lord, we pray for wisdom during this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our call?
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Lorcan?
Here.
Mr. Erwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey, absent.
Approve minutes of June 20, 2017, meeting and dispensary reading.
So moved.
Counsel, please cast your vote. Do we have any addition?
No, sir, we have no additions to the agenda.
And we'd like to-
My motion to approve the agenda.
Second, counsel, please cast your vote. Before we get to the special guest, I think I'll take the opportunity to congratulate the mayor and also the members of the city council for another four-year term to serve the people of Bossier City. And also, I'd like to thank Mayor Walker for his taking care of the expense of the invitations and also the reception on last week.
I'd like to thank the voters who gave me the money to do it.
So we appreciate that. And regarding the guests who will speak and any person who would like to speak before the council, once you come up, you will give your name and your address and you will be able to speak or to comment on the agenda item that the clerk will read. And everybody feel free to do that. I will open the floor for that purpose each time. And we welcome all comments on each item. So the first person we have is a guest today, this Cagle.
My name is Sunny Cagle. I live at 1218 Elsa Jane in Bossier City. I'm part of District 4 because I've talked to Mr. Free. I'm here to address an issue that I have with the Bossier City Utility Department over a water bill. And after I realized that I was being overcharged and there was a problem, I started hearing from other residents, not just in District 4, that are having the same problem. And I am a renter where I live at. And I've now had even a master plumber out that is redoing the plumbing for Bossier City High School. And he has come out and there are no leaks and there are still issues. My problem is that the Bossier City Utility Department really is not helpful. Mr. Free's been helpful, but even getting the bill cut in half when you have people that are sitting on, you know, social security, limited income, and then they're getting bills like this, they go to the utility department and they simply cut the water off. Somebody's got to do something about it. I've talked several times to, I can't remember her last name, Ms. Phyllis, and she even offered something for me to try and do with food coloring just to see if I did have a leak running water somewhere. And I did so, still the colored water is still sitting in my toilet. So there's not a leak. But they've already changed my meter out and I think the reading now shows about 35,000 gallons for the month. I understand it's automated. This master plumber has come out, gone through everything, you know, and I'm still having a problem. I have bills when the house was empty from the actual homeowner because it's company and they were $485 with no one in the house. My issue that I'm trying to present is who is checking behind the water department and who is helping the residents? Because basically my bill was due June 20th and would have been cut off within a few days for not paying it. And there's no recourse. If it was Center Point, they would be coming out, trying to figure something out and work with you. If that was really my bill, if it was SWEPTO, they would be coming out, trying to work with me, trying to figure out what was going on. And it's not just District 4 that's being affected. There are, I've talked to 13 residents, only one was a portion of District 4. And it's all the same thing. And I understand they've changed my meter out, but there is still a problem even with that. And even with the help that Mr. Free's giving me, cutting my bill in half when it's a $900 bill, that's not going to help me. I mean, yeah, okay, I'm going to have to pay that. What does that do for people on a set income that have no option? If you take a bill like that and you cut it in half, it's not going to give them the option to pay that. It's still going to be cut off. You know, how come it's not at least being average to what I should use and somebody come out without me having to raise a fuss and call the city council to get anything done? So that's what I'm here to address. I'm not the only one it's happening to. It's happened a lot. And now I've got plumber bills in addition to the water bill. And there still is a problem even though the meter was changed out. I'm not a plumber, I don't know anything about that. But a master plumber's come out, explains about other components, and it's just been nothing but one thing after another. And it seems pretty simple. So, and Mr. Free's been great, Ms. Phyllis has been great. But who checks up behind this and who is helping, you know, residents in the city of Bossier? I mean, how many people has this happened to?
Would you appreciate your bringing it to the city of attention and also the administration? And I think they would be receptive to your having a dialogue, more so if you choose to do that. We have the mayor right here and we have his CAO right there.
The President might be helpful if either Judy and/or Pam provide some additional information. Judy, would you?
Here and now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Judy Beckcutter, City Bossier Water Department. I think with this particular account, when she notified the office of her first bill that was like $369, I believe I gave it to y'all. My clerk noticed there was consistent use hour on the hour. And what we try to do is tell the customer that there is a problem. And so they can get it looked at and addressed. And then we also go out and do a gallon test. So we did the two things. We told her there was a problem. I believe she had the plumber change up the guts of the toilet, as they call it. At that point in time, I think there was a little bit of help and relief because we didn't have the 200 every single hour on the hour. We still had 11, you know, gallons, 12 gallons and so forth. So when they come back and say, hey, I've got it fixed, here's the plumbing bill, split the water and sewer, we really like to look back at the account and make sure that it's completely fixed so that the customer doesn't get yet another big bill the next month and say, oh, wait a minute, you gave me the adjustment. So when that happened, it was still showing a small usage, but every hour on the hour. We notified her. I don't know exactly what happened at that point. I know she went back. And the next I, I had never talked with her. And the next I knew that the news had said that she had a $900 water bill and then other people on that street. So what we did is did the two gallon tests. They both came back correct and to, you know, to the penny or the drop of the gallons. What that does is just ensure that it's reading correctly, you know? And that's all we do with a brand-new meter because we get hourly reads. Other than that, you know, that's all we can do for the homeowners and split the water and sewer usage of the water bill once it's been fixed. We do it daily, every day for people. They get it fixed, we come back and we do that. That's all that we have done. So on our end, you know, we still feel like there's something that is missing there. That's, I don't know what it is, I can't tell you. Our people can only suggest toilets, you know, faucets, things like that.
Do you think your technician would suggest that the property owner have someone to-
Yes, sir. We normally tell the customer if they're renting that, you know, you need to talk to the person who owns the house, get them to come out and help you fix it, help you do whatever. We've had customers say, well, they took it off our bill because we did have to pay this, you know, plumbing bill. We don't always try to suggest immediately that they, we never use the word, you have to get a plumber. We like to let them know there's a problem and they usually end up talking to the person who owns the house and get it fixed. I believe there was the prior tenant, or if it was just an empty house, I'm not sure. I know there was several bills in a row, so I assume there was something why it was left on. But there was a $400 bill at one point in time, a couple of months back, before she moved in on that particular account. So to me, there's a kind of an ongoing, whether they're putting a Band-Aid over it or not or fixing it all the way, I don't know. But, you know, when we also, I'd like to note, when we were notified of the large bill, we did put her in the do-not-cut-off folder so that she had a problem, so that we did not cut her off. And we did not. So we try to work with the customer when they have a plumbing problem or an issue that they're trying to address. We don't just go cut them right off, so we do as much as we can.
Okay.
Just for your understanding, I've talked to Judy on many, many, many occasions.
Yes, sir.
A lot of, and they're always willing to help do something, you know, whether it's a cutoff or not cutoff or whatever. She's been there to help. My suggestion is like she did, said, have you contacted your landlord?
Yeah, to finish that, I had a plumber out even on July 4th and it's a master plumber that has even called and said, this is my ID number. There is a problem like the $400 bill. The house was actually empty. It is like a company that owns rental houses and they paid it because they're not here. They're not in like Bossier City, they're in Waco, Texas. My issue is like even cutting a bill in half. And like she said, this happens multiple times. So we just basically suck it up and you know that I, even if you cut the bill in half, just the one bill for 68,000. So basically I'm paying for using 34,000 gallons. Is that the standard for a single person?
No, where I was getting to, you know-
But we've had, I've had four plumbers, I've had a plumber out four times.
Where I was getting to. And I've done some plumbing, okay?
Yeah, I don't know enough about it, but-
If it's nothing looking in your toilet, your bathtub, your sinks or whatever, in the walls, you'd see it in your sheet rock? You've got something under your slab.
That's what he checked for.
They do have equipment, they come in and go over your slab and they can hear a leak. Now they're going to drill it up, you know, but that's when you need to be getting with your landlords. All their people can do is change the meter, check the meter, do the two gallon test. They're not, if you want them to come in your house and change things, that's not their job.
I'm not wanting them to do that.
I'm just telling you, you need to contact your landlord.
And I have. And the landlord sent somebody out like four times now.
And a plumber that has one of those machines that can come in and do this slab test, that's the only way you're going to find out. Plumber's not that difficult, it's rocket science. Either you see it come out or you don't.
Well, I understand, but that's already been done and he couldn't find a slab leak. And he explained what all I would be seeing too on the slab leak, but he cannot find a leak anywhere. And he's done that. And he even came back on July 4th on the holiday just to check because he knew the meter had been changed out. And he did explain other stuff, but they came in there with actual equipment, went through everything. And he's been there four times now. And it's still, there's still something going on. I understand that that meter's reading something. But there's still something going on and he can't find any leaks. Now, when it comes down to it, what I was asking about was, okay, they cut the bill in half. So that's all a resident gets is that, there's nothing that tells the city, hey, this is too much water, something's wrong? I mean, that's not even an average for like an individual to use that much. There's nothing that, I guess, pops up with them that says, hey, something might be wrong here?
Well, once they report it, they can, like she did, say, they can ping it every hour and see if it's leaking every hour. They can't tell you where it's coming from. All they can tell you is your meter's running. Every hour it's showing usage. That's what I'm saying. Where they did or not, I'm not going to say, you need to get somebody out there with a slab, a water detector under the slab and let them find it. Because if you don't see it in the house, it's going somewhere and it's probably going down under the slab.
And they've done that and he couldn't find a slab leak. So now what's the next step?
Ben, do you have any input you would like to offer?
Hey, guys, good afternoon. I'm Ben Rochenbach. I work for Manchek Consulting and have helped manage the utility department for Bossier City. And what I'm hearing is pretty simple to determine whether or not your house is leaking and there's an issue with the meter. If you shut everything off in your house and your meter's still running, you've got a leak, period. And that's not something, you know, that's on the customer side. In the city of Bossier, you know, the customers generally are required to take care of those issues themselves. So can you tell me, what did your plumber tell you?
Oh, the fourth time he came out, the same thing. He still couldn't find anything and he had already done the machine stuff. And he explained all that, but he just, he came out to take a look again at the meter because he can't find any leak, he's not showing anything.
But did he confirm that when everything was shut off, the meter was still running?
He basically told me if he shuts it off from the house, it's not. And that's it. I don't understand enough about plumbing, but it's, I mean-
Yeah, if he shuts your mass, if he shuts it off at the meter, it stops. But if you have your faucets and everything's turned off in your house and you open the meter and it's still running, the odometer like in a car is still running, that would suggest you've got a leak somewhere, like-
I understand that. And the owner's been sending a plumber out, but he can't find anything. So I'm still stuck with, and I understand the meter's been changed out, I understand all of that. But when it comes down to it, I mean, this isn't just me that this has happened to and there's no solution. So basically I'm just going to need to move out of the house because a plumber's saying there's no leak in the slab. He's brought stuff in there and this is the best we're going to do. Because I think the new reading now is showing 35,000 gallons. You go look at the average for a single person in a month, they wouldn't use 35,000 gallons. That's like two whole-
Could I ask Judy to answer another question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Judy, have you heard any other complaints from other customers on Elsa Jane?
No, sir, I have not. And I did a query of two years when I saw the story report that we had a $1,300 water bill and there's no accounts for two years, month by month, of anybody on Elsa Jane. And I'd like to add, anybody that does have a problem, we've not had a complaint won out of someone who's gotten a plumber or either told their landlord. Usually the landlord that's a good landlord doesn't charge the, you know, the tenant, either the, you know, the bill to get it fixed or the water splits it with them or does something. So again, that's what's only bad part is when they rent.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What plumbing company are you using?
His first name's Derek, I think it's called Available Plumbing. Well, they sent out a different one the first time. Then they sent this guy out because he's a master plumber and they wanted to have the slab checked. But he was aggravated because he couldn't find anything after the machines. And so he came out July 4th, he called me that morning to see if he could come out and have I look at the meter.
Could you come back to the mic right there?
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
And the only thing I can tell you is they contacted this guy and he's working on Bossier City High School's plumbing right now. So if he can't find anything, you know, the only solution basically is I just pay half the bill. So I'm stuck with that.
Just call me. And what I can at least do is send one of our guys out to see what we can, see if we see anything when we go out.
It does look though, at the end of the day, what's happening is somewhere on your premises, water is being consumed and it needs to be stopped. And that is, that would be the responsibility of either essentially the owner or you as the tenant. But it can't be the responsibility of the city because that's not, wouldn't be a good idea for the city going around fixing everybody's plumbing, so.
And I understand that, it's just we still got a problem and a plumber's been out.
Well, then, if you understand that, then do you understand that you would have to get it fixed? I mean, that's-
The owner's going to, was trying to get it fixed. My issue is that I'm not the only one it's happened to and it wasn't a bunch of Elsa Jane residents that it's happened to. But it basically, you cut my bill in half, but I still don't have the problem solved even though a plumber's been out repeatedly.
Okay, well, I can, doesn't look like we're heading anywhere here, but anyway.
I'd change plumbers and let a new one come out.
That's the third plumber they've sent out.
That's the third person they sent out from their company?
No, it's different companies. Because they wanted to check a slab leak. And that's why the last one that was master plumber came out was to try and find a slab leak and he couldn't.
Okay, thank you so much. And I appreciate the administration for cutting your bill in half. That's a courtesy of the city. And I know it's not what you expected, but it was something, I think. Mr. Free, did you have something you want to add to your constituent?
No. Can you follow up, Ben, and see if you can see anything? I think ultimately though, like they've had suggested, we're going to have to find somebody at the landlord's expense to go out and do a slab test and figure out where that water leakage is coming from. Because it's not stopped.
I'll just have them submit the paperwork because they already did a slab test. He did a slab test on the, it was Saturday actually, because the meter was changed out on Friday.
Yeah, can you forward me those?
Yeah, I can do that.
Please, and I'll follow up as well after Ben goes and takes a peek.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ben, Judy, mayor. Any finished business?
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the institution of exappropriation proceedings pursuant to a local services agreement executed between the parish of Bossier and the city of Bossier City against the property located at Lot 5, 5A, the Pierre Bossier subdivision, replat, Bossier City, Louisiana. More particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, Parcel P3, in connection with the East Texas Street Gravity Main Repairs Project. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
The floor is open for any comments. Counsel, please vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the institution of exappropriation proceedings pursuant to a local services agreement executed between the parish of Bossier and the city of Bossier City against the property located at 2968 East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. More particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, Parcel P5 and 7, in connection with the East Texas Street Gravity Main Repairs Project. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Open for any comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the institution of exappropriation proceedings pursuant to a local services agreement executed between the parish of Bossier and the city of Bossier City against the property located at Lot 1, less than described in Volume 1149-243, Lots 1A, 3, 10, and 4, less Pierre Bossier replat of Lot 4, the Pierre Bossier subdivision replat, Bossier City, Louisiana. More particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, Parcel P2 and 4, in connection with the East Texas Street Gravity Main Repairs Project. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Comment from anyone? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Green Acres Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of $3,800,000 to come from the 2014 Utility Bond Fund. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an order to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Green Acres Sewer Force Main Project for a total of $4,480,000 to come from the 2014 Utility Bond Fund. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Adopt an ordinance declaring the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the purposes of new home ownership opportunities as a donation to the Fuller Center, otherwise providing with respect there to. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please vote. New business?
Public hearing to allow all interested persons to express their views with regard to the proposed issuance by the city of not exceeding $13 million of its taxable utilities revenue bonds, 2017 series, the bonds in various series either as taxable or tax-exempt obligations at a rate or rates not to exceed 4% per annum for a term or terms not exceeding 22 years from the date of issuance of each individual series. This hearing is being held in accordance with the previously published notice of intention to issue bonds.
We open the floor for public input on this hearing. Anyone would like to give comments on this item? The public hearing is now closed. Need a motion? We don't need a motion on this, okay. Item number two?
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for the repairs to the ozone system at the water treatment plant at a cost of $20,000. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one replacement police departmental records clerk due to retirement from the department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two replacement police officers due to a termination and a retirement from the department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
The floor is open for comments. Please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one replacement police communications officer due to a resignation from the department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing one permits and inspection clerk to be replaced due to a vacancy from termination. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution to replace two deputy marshals due to termination to promote one deputy to the position of sergeant, all within the current budget of the marshal's office. First and final reading?
Mr. President, I'd like to continue this to August, continue the resolution to August 1st. Then we'll, we're going to rewrite the ordinance a little bit. And we may be, we may have to call a special meeting to get this done in a timely manner, but-
Is that a motion, Mr. Williams?
That's a motion to continue to the first, August 1st.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Okay, any comments from the public? Counsel, please vote for the continuation.
Okay, so it's on the agenda for August 1st. Adopt a resolution to create the position of EMS officer within the budget of the Bossier City Fire Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
I thought Mr. Kasone would come up, is he here? Yeah, there he is. Chief, I'm sorry. And give us that great creative input that he always gives us on items like this.
This position, we were looking to try to think outside the box a little bit. We've been running out of ambulances. We only have four ambulances for the whole city. As you heard, the population came up when people are shopping. So we looked at our times of the week and it seemed to be Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays. We're really between 8:00 and 5:00, 8:00 and 6:00. We were, seemed to be running out of ambulances. Last I looked, and don't quote me on the numbers, around the end of April, we had used mutual aid 80-something times already this year. So we did a little pilot program on our own. We took the Assistant Chief of EMS and myself- We took the assistant chief of EMS and myself or the deputy chief or the chief EMS, whomever, we would throw two people together and we keep a reserve ambulance at the complex now. And we ran a power shift, eight to five Monday through Friday. And we dramatically dropped our numbers of calling mutual aid. The deal, we call mutual aid or we go mutual aid, we don't bill and they don't bill. It was just too confusing on the billing process. But with this position here, I kind of look at it like a power shift. Have a guy that we can use for EMS training to go out and do anything we need him to do as far as EMS training and new equipment and all that. Also have him with one of us to run a power shift between eight and five Monday through Friday and use him on a, if we get in the holiday season, adjust their hours or whatever, to where we can run that fifth ambulance. If we had to man up a fifth ambulance, you're looking at no less than nine employees. This is a way to do it for the cost of captain's pay, which, don't quote me on this, 25% over starting pay of a firefighter. We made one run. If he catches one run in a month, he triples that amount of money in the amount we receive in being able to bill for that one call. Also, we wanted to look into doing, we're seeing around the country, like McKinney, Texas is kind of the leader in community paramedicine. We're going to use this and start using this guy to address. You have people who, we looked, so far this year, we've made one run on a person 30 something times already, same person. Well, we'll go out, he'll go out, we'll meet with these people and we'll address if they're not taking their medicine correctly or any way we can help them lay their medicine out, how to lay it out, just kind of educate them and what to do to help take care of themselves. And we'll have a list of Meals on Wheels, Council on Aging, all the different agencies we can help put them in touch with to help them take care of themselves out in the community. So that's our idea. We're just trying to figure out a way to assist with the problem we have without coming to y'all and saying, hey, I need nine or 10 people and we need to add a fifth ambulance. We just thought we'd try something. And in our two-month trial period, so far, knock on wood, has worked really well as far as manning up that ambulance. So we, matter of fact, we take delivery next week of a brand new ambulance that's a full frontline reserve. It'll never go frontline, it'll be the one sitting down there, which will be our fit one to jump into whenever we need it. And we just think we can do it by using it, thinking outside the box and doing it with one person instead of 10 people, so.
Great, sounds good. Fair and innovative. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. The floor is open for comments from anybody in the public. We have a motion, Mr. Free, and I think a second, Mr. Williams. Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution indicating the intention of the city of Bozier City, State of Louisiana, to approve the two-year appointment of Lynn Austin as a director to the Board of Louisiana Local Government, Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority. The authority as provided by Chapter 10D of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended. First and final reading?
Some move. Second.
Any comments? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor?
Some move. Second.
Comments from public? Please vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill three vacancies in the Public Works Department. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Comments? Please vote.
Approve parade permit fee waivers for the following airline high school homecoming parade, September 28th, 2017, and the Melissa Maggio Remembrance Run, September 9th, 2017.
Some move. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Please vote.
Approve reappointment of Don Williams as a representative for the Shreveport Bozier Sports Commission, appointment effective August 30th, 2017, and expires August 30th, 2021. And I skipped one, I know I did, but I'll go back to it.
So reverse?
Some move.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Don Williams is the next one, but we're going to reverse it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Any comments? Counsel, please vote.
I got ahead of myself. Approve reappointment of Billy Montgomery as the joint representative of the Shreveport Bozier Sports Commission, appointment effective August 30th, 2017, and expires August 30th, 2019.
Some move. Second.
Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please vote.
Try that again.
We got to vote again.
Did we get that?
Mr. Free, Mr. Darby, and Mr. Locken.
Let's vote again.
There we go.
That's the last item?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay. We will have the agenda meeting on the 11th of July. That's a Tuesday. It won't be on a Thursday. And that's at 3:00 P. M. We do appreciate the service that everyone bring to the city and thank you for being here. This meeting is adjourned.